Okay, if I can get your attention, I'm going to call the Loudoun County Commission meeting for September 8, 2020 to order, and we're probably a couple of minutes late, 6:02 PM. First up is Jim Jenkins. Tell us about this zoning resolution.
This is a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 of Tennessee Code Annotated to rezone approximately 1.69 acres from C2, general commercial district, to C1, rural center district, Loudoun County tax map 050, parcel 193.02, located at 299 Davis Ferry Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the first legislative district.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this zoning resolution? Step to the podium, tell me your name and your concern. Jeff Russell.
Jeff Russell, I own that piece of property, and I want to go by, had it zoned to commercial to begin with after I had it at C2, and I went, well, I was at C1 and went to C2, want to go back to C1 to match the other property that I have joining it in case I want to sell in the future or put a residential there. What I had planned for commercial didn't work out, but I had to have it done that way to do the research.
Okay. That'll be Item B on the agenda. Anybody else wish to speak for or against this? Okay, I'll close the public comments on the zoning resolution. If you would, please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if you could, bow your head. Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon all of us. We ask that you bless this commission meeting and the commissioners who serve our great county. We also ask, Lord, would you please heal our nation? We ask too that you watch out for the first responders, the military personnel, and our law enforcement officers as they go about their protective duties. Rest in peace, Richmond Units 71 and 764, we miss you. We ask this all in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Okay, Tammy, call the roll.
Please, sir. Here. Mears.
Here.
Hurley.
Here.
Tinker.
Here.
Sutterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Depp.
Here.
Saber.
Here.
Waller.
Here.
Okay. All present? Mayor Buddy Bradshaw, election of the commission chairperson and the vice chair.
This time I will open up nominations for chair for the term 2020 through August 2021, term for chairman of Loudoun County Commission. I'll take nominations at this time.
I would like to put for Henry Cullen's name and also in my motion that he be elected unanimously, I hope by the commission tonight.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let the floor open for nominations for amendment.
Okay.
Any more nomination or nomination ceases.
Make a motion, nominate, sleep.
I'll say.
All in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All in favor of Commissioner Henry Cullen as chair for Loudoun County Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, the chairman requests the nomination for the election of the Loudoun County Commission Chair pro tempore for September 2020 to August 21.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, I'll make a nomination of Ms. Brewster to continue as our pro tempore.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second for Kelly Littleton Brewster. Any other nominations?
Make a motion, nominate, sleep.
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion carries. Let me just say a couple of words. First of all, I appreciate your vote of confidence, and I have to tell you, these have been two wild years that we've gone through. Last year, it was the jail and the jailers and the budget. This year, we met up with COVID-19, which we never expected, so I'm going to say, hopefully God will bless us and get these disasters out of the way, and I thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you're very sincere about this, I think that a way to really show your greater appreciation tonight, take all the commissioners and Tracy and the mayor to TikToks after the meeting.
That's kind of a low budget option. Get some meat out of that.
That's the best we got.
Carl, let's go with tail, man.
I thought you were going to ask for steak, and I would have told you I'll put it through the meat grinder.
I would second that motion.
Adoption of the September 8, 2020 Loudoun County Commission Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have Dr. Geider's proclamation ready, but I forgot to call Dr. Geider, and the proclamation's still on my desk even. I will get a hold of him if he can zoom in for the workshop itself in a couple of weeks, and also need to add, if it pleases the commission, the TRDA appointments, which would be myself by position and Jimmy Matlock as well.
Okay. I will add that under.
I just completely forgot to call him.
Okay, I will add that under boards and committees. Any other changes? Tracy?
We, the, consider, we would like for, to commission to consider an increase in the GIS budget of $3,500. We've had an employee, Mike Kevan, an employee turn in his two-week notice, or a notice, I don't know if it's two weeks or not, or four weeks, but we would like to do, Mike would like to have some cross-training done before he leaves, a little bit of a run over there of approximately $3,500 while both are employed in that position. And it's, I'll let my female ask a question, I can ask Mike, and so when the time comes, we would like to add that to the workshop or to the agenda, please.
Under Tracy's.
Under Tracy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now come back out, make the budget, does it need a permanent increase?
No.
This is because of the overlap.
Just check and make this.
Okay. Any other changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget as amended.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda, hasn't been amended.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
We got a second from Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the August 3, 2020, Loudoun County Commission meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Kelly Littleton Brewster seconds that motion.
How do you spell that?
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any general public comments?
That one right here.
Anyone wish to address the commission?
Is that the first time, is that the second time? Don't have no watch.
Wow. Okay, I'll close the public comments. Mayor Buddy Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boards and committees, they are what we had, same we had in workshop, same. Steve Cook is the one that's taking the open spot on the Ethics Committee, and there'll be a reappearance for Jimmy Matlock on the TRDA board.
Okay.
And we can do those all at once or one at a time. They were having commission approval.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor's recommendation for the board and committees.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the recommendations for Mayor Bradshaw. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one second. Ms. Brewster, does that make you all a full Ethics Committee now with the addition of Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Don't y'all have a meeting this week sometime?
We do, on Thursday at noon at the county building.
At the county building?
At the county building, not here in the annex. It is being occupied.
Okay.
Just FYI for the commission, we have a couple of, I wouldn't say events, memorial services coming up for 9/11 on Friday, one will be at the Sheriff's Department, and then they will be at 8:30 at Loudoun Fire Department as well. Those are open to the public and just commemorate 9/11.
What time is the Sheriff's Department?
I'm not sure, sir.
7:30, I believe. That's what I have. If it's not 7:30, I'll send it out.
And Loudoun, 8:30.
8:30 here.
8:00 AM. The one at 7:30, I think, is back to blue. Is that what it is?
It's in the calendar as, okay, yeah. I'll find out exactly when to send it out. It might work.
Adam wanted to know, does 7:30 come twice a day? Is there one in the morning and an evening?
There is. One's AM and the other's PM.
I wanted to make sure this meeting, I wanted to make sure.
Football night on Friday night, though.
He's confused.
He's bad confused.
Been that way for a long time.
Anything else, Mayor?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, commission.
Jim Jenkins, come on back up and tell us about the zoning resolution.
Make a motion, we've proposed the reading, a vote.
Second. Whose district is this?
It's ours.
First.
There you go.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second on the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the zoning resolution. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. Oh, God. Jim, the old nursing home out of Williams Ferry Road, several complaints on its condition. No, there's not much we can do. Could you kind of look into that and see if, send them a nasty letter of some kind, say, clean your place up?
Are you going to stay till the end of the meeting or are you leaving?
I can stay. It's moving on.
I just had a question for you.
Hit him now, he's ready to go. Hit him now.
I'll say what. I just want to, what the rezoning request is on 321, they're right at Fort Loudoun Estates on the right there.
The portion of the ground, it's separated, there's a three-eighth of triage right there that I want to go from H2 to C2 zoning district. It's right beside where Wally's stand was, and there's some other parcels there. He's looking to rezone that about 3.8 acres to C2.
Okay, thank you.
Is that outside the Lower City UGB?
It is.
Oh, and I found out what's going on on Meadow Road West, a side farm.
Side farm.
Okay.
Growing grass.
You're done.
Growing grass. Anything further for Jim?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good there.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Director of Accounts and Budgets, Tracy Blair.
Thank you, sir. The first item under my name is consideration of recommendation to cease raises of elected officials as appropriated in the FY 2021 budget. The adjustment in minimum salaries for county officials each year is governed by TCA 824-102, and it's summarized in the opening paragraph of the salary schedule that's published by CTAAS each year, and that paragraph states in part, "This law provides for an automatic increase in the minimum salary each year based on the percentage increase given to state employees for the previous fiscal year. It requires the Commissioner of Finance and Administration to certify to the Compteur of the Treasury the average annualized increase in state employees' compensation on or before May 1 of each year. The Commissioner certified on October 21, 2019, that state employees received an average increase of 3.4% for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Basically, the increase for our local officials is based on the percentage increase received by state employees the previous year. So, state employees received 2.5% in fiscal year 1819, local officials received that amount in 1920. The state employees received 3.45% in 1920, local officials will receive it in 2021. Based on this, the state employees did not receive a raise in 2021, so our local officials should not receive a raise in 2122. The proposed budget for the year that we're in, fiscal year 2021, that budget included the state required minimums for the elected officials, and that budget was approved on June 29 with these requirements. But during the 2021 budget preparation process, the Budget Committee had many discussions that included withholding wage increases from the elected officials, and it was based on the state's decision to withhold increases for state employees in this same year in 2021. Those discussions included the information about the local officials receiving their wage increases that are based on the previous year that I just read to you, as well as the fact that failure to meet the state minimums will result in an audit finding. But at the August 17 Budget Committee meeting, the Budget Committee discussed its intent that no county employee, including the elected officials, receive a wage increase with the adoption of the 2021 budget. So, the Budget Committee's recommendation before you this evening is to cease the fiscal year 2021 wage increases of the elected officials effective with the September 15 paycheck.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The Budget Committee's recommendation?
Yes.
The Budget Committee recommends that the wage increases for the elected officials, that it ends September 15.
Do you have the vote on that, Tracy?
I do. At the Budget Committee, it was four for it and one against it.
Would you mind telling me who these people are?
The elected officials that we're talking about? Yes. It's the Assessor of Property, the County Clerk, the Clerks of the Court, that would be our Circuit Sessions, Clerk, trustees, Register of Deeds, the Clerk and Master, and also our Administrator of Elections.
Can I ask, can I make a comment concerning this at this time? Is it time to do that? To deny them the increase that they have received since.
July 1st.
Lord knows when, is a violation of the state mandate. And the, I can't see us deliberately denying an increase to those people that you mentioned when it is a violation of the state mandate. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Under TCA, it's under TCA.
824.
824-102 specifically.
And it is, also, spinoff of this, it also keeps Tracy from receiving 10, 3, we have two now.
We've got three.
We got three.
Yes.
Two, and we're up to the third.
We're up for the fourth, actually.
Up to the fourth.
Yes, sir.
Three, and it's coming up to the fourth. This violation will get, what do they call it, a demerit?
A finding, it'll be a finding.
A finding, and that ends it. So, that, I think, to most of us, that's important, important to us and the county So, the vote, have you asked for a vote? Are you asking for a vote?
The chairman will entertain a motion whenever discussion is up.
We need a motion and a second in order to discuss. Gentlemen, we were already discussing it, but.
Can't believe.
We've got a motion and a second, but I've got a question for Tracy. What you just told us is it's a violation of the TCA, and that it's next year that there'll be without a raise.
That is correct.
I'm going to make the motion, so we'll get all this at order. I'm going to make the motion that we cease the raises as recommended by the Budget Committee. If we get a second, then we'll discuss.
Okay, we got a motion to cease the raises. Do we have a second?
I'll need a second for discussion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I could just for one minute, go back about this far after the fact, it makes it all sound a whole lot different. As we were sitting in the Budget Committee, faced with enormous tasks this year, as Henry's already alluded to, our first step at the budget was a $2 million deficit, the first one we came back with. That included some things that after we come to terms with it, we just couldn't pass a $2 million budget. We went back and we gleaned everything we could glean out of it to try to get it down. We finally got it down to a 1.57 million in the whole budget, with extreme hopes that our revenues would be fantastic and our expenditures would be less than we were anticipating. As we got it down from the 2 million to the million and a half, we hunted everything we could hunt. One of the things we found, when the state came out and made a public statement that the governor had withdrawn the raises to teachers and withdrawn the raises to state employees, we felt, I felt, I'll speak from, I don't speak for the whole Budget Committee, I felt, this makes it, this makes it good. Now, we can eliminate the elected official raises, we eliminate all the other raises, and that took us from the 2 million down to the million and a half. The elected officials, the salary, the fee office holders raises were about $30,000, 28, 29, something like that. So, that was another 28 or 29 thousand dollars we sawed off in the process of solid out. That's how we got to where we were. We knew of all these things that were told, we knew the possibility of an audit finding, and Tracy was the one who said, don't make a decision based on whether or not it's an audit finding. The Budget Committee needs to do what the Budget Committee wants to do. So, we ultimately did it, we presented it, everybody seemed okay with it, we passed the full budget unanimously, actually, the night of, and that's how it got where it was. I think all of us were a little surprised when we found that those seven or eight or how many it was, was still in the budget. So, the option is either leave them there, and they get the 3.5% raise, or to stop where we're at, they will have all gotten about $500 of the raise. I hope we're going to be able at Christmas time to do the $500 bonus for our rest of our employees, so that would have them with their $500 bonus. But that's what brought us to where we're at on this conversation right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just a point, I guess, the moral outrage, the fact that we've asked so many people, not just in our county but statewide, to go without a raise, but our elected officials are going to receive them, but the people that work for them are not. And I said, to me, that seems a little bit backward, and I don't particularly care for it. I thought maybe our elected officials, in a show of solidarity, would refuse to pay the increases.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think TCA is clear as far as what the law is, what's due, even though it's, I don't like it, I don't like the fact that we are made to give raises to some people and not be able to give raises to everybody.
I think you've denied everybody. You denied education.
We denied, we sure did.
You.
Denied our county employees, our main people too, our lowest paid people, which are our county employees.
I don't care about education, because they let the county, the teacher grades go out the door last year with the former director of schools. They paid, they paid him more than enough money to give him a 2 and a half percent raise, but they decided, you know, they bought out that contract and spent their money on him, you know, so that's the way I feel about that. Now, going forward, you know, we hopefully can do that, but just a point, you know, I'm going, you know, to say we vote to give the elected officials a raise. Well, in this, Mr. Mayor, in this, in our policies here, how we address this, it's in the state, so is it not in ours? We don't have policies now. As well as the budget that we passed the other day, like Tracy explained to us.
There are many times, I guess, we may have been over it now, under my six years, where it's typically the Phelps collections along with Clerk and Master and Clerk's Office, they have typically been in line with what the state mandates now. I don't know that.
I've never known the wages of those officials to be less than the minimum, and that's just in the years since I've been in this position. It has always been at the state minimum, whatever the state employees received the year before. There have been years that will be similar to next year, meaning that state employees didn't get a raise, so the next year, our local officials did not receive a raise. That has happened before.
So, I think that's what you need to make clear too, even though those state employees will not get a raise next year.
State employees did not get a raise in 2020.
Our elected officials won't.
Our elected officials next year will not get a.
Right, right.
I think that's it.
I move for the vote, please.
But now, I want to clarify one thing, this is not, this does not include the mayor, the sheriff, or the road supervisor. They're already separate.
That action was taken separately.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to withdraw my motion. If second's withdrawn, we consider different motions.
I will withdraw my second.
And I'll make a point right here, if we don't do anything, it stays like it is. No action's necessary.
Sounds good.
Next.
Are you withdrawing?
I withdrew, and Kelly withdrew.
Okay.
So, it takes no action to do anything, is that right, Tracy?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a problem with what's going on here. I cannot support this knowingly, but in the, in the past, this same thing has gone for all of the people for the, what, since 2006 or whenever it was, whatever the year was. And then the state calls it a violation of the state mandate.
They're getting a raise.
That, you're going to vote, make a motion to get them, give them the raise?
Got them. They already got the raise.
It is like this.
Yes, it is like this. We're done, it stays like it is.
Mr. Deff, I think it's what you would term a unfunded mandate.
Absolutely it is. And they'll tell you in Nashville that there's been, there's been times that certain officials have tried to do away with this minimum thing, and the problem they run up against is about 90% of the state legislature down there have served in county government somewhere, and so they tend to protect their own, so that's kind of what we're hunting.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Tracy something.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Waller said that this does not affect the mayor and the Highway Department and the sheriff. Can you please explain to commission why this does not affect them?
Yes, exactly. For as long as I can remember, the sheriff has received a supplement in addition to his minimum salary. And back in about 2006 or '07, that was discussed, and the amount of the supplement was questioned. I don't know what that original amount was. Sheriff Geider has stated that it goes back. Sheriff Gider has stated that it goes back even before he was sheriff, so I don't know what that minimum amount was. But at that time, about 2006 or '07, it was agreed upon that if we looked at whatever the sheriff's salary was the year before and compare it to whatever the minimum was that year, that the difference would be what the supplement was. That amount is $4,915, and it has been that amount since that time. The sheriff receives that for work as a workhouse superintendent, and the highway department superintendent has received that as well. So, the amount that they are paid is above the state minimum. And by the way, that TCA that requires the minimum states that you can pay them as much above the minimum as you want. Now, the mayor's salary by state law is required to be 5% higher than the highest-paid constitutional officer, which that's the sheriff. And so, that's why the sheriff's and mayor and highway superintendent's wages have been higher than the minimum. Now, the Budget Committee's recommendation for the 2021 budget was to freeze the wages of those three elected officials at the amounts that it was the year before, which that amount is still a little bit above the state minimum. That's why that could be done without, without danger, I guess, of an audit finding or not compliant with state law. It's still a little bit above the state minimum. But I think the idea it was to get it to the point that gradually, that supplement for the sheriff and the highway department superintendent would gradually go away as the minimum amounts increased.
Well, that's where I come from on it. I can't understand why even you're gonna delay it, is what you're talking about.
The explanation that I just gave...
Are you gonna start reducing it at some point in time? That's what I thought I heard you say.
The explanation that I just gave only involved the sheriff, highway department superintendent, and the mayor.
I understand that.
Only them. As far as these other elected officials, the registered Ds, the assessor, the trustee, the clerks of court, as far as all of them are concerned, the lack of action here this evening means that they will continue to get their minimum wages as is required for the current year budget, because that's what was adopted.
And they won't get one next year.
All good.
That makes sense.
Go ahead. I'll tell you a couple of things. I did not know anything about this till today in regard to what, I knew I did not get a raise, and I was, I guess I was supposing that no one was getting a raise, so as I'd heard. And I didn't realize that we were a year behind the state's mandate, so got my curiosity going, and so I called Tracy, and that's where it stands, where county commission decided to halt mine and Eddie's and the mayor's raises because of mine salary. You know, I applaud, I guess, or I thank the county commission in 1982 that gave Sheriff Sims a supplement, and I've received it now. Obviously, I inherited that in 1990, and I don't recall the exact amount that was above the mandatory minimum. It seems like it may have been about $3,000 back then, maybe, just make it. I know there's a resolution somewhere, and we looked it up once, and this has been going on and on and on every, for years of trying to reduce the supplement or take the supplement away, but I don't feel like, you know, it's okay with me. As it stands right now, I'm still making about $1,800, I think, more than the minimum, if that's right, Tracy.
That's correct.
But with these other guys who were hired and came on later, and that was their expected salary, and freeze them for, because you're wrong to freeze me, that doesn't seem fair to me, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, that's just certain people that attempt to do that, that's not the whole commission, is it, was it? Every year, there's a commissioner sitting beside you that tries to take that supplement away from me, which in turn affects Eddie and the mayor's salary. I understand that. And every year, he's never got a second, until this year. So, I, again, I was... Well, then, we may need to make correction of that. That I thought it was, you know, no one got a raise, till I found out today what happened. That's what it started out.
This year's a little different, and the fact that this came out of budget as a recommendation. Now, Van's always made that motion in the past, this one actually came out because, and part of it is me, the simple fact, I didn't feel comfortable, I'm not defending Van, I don't want to accuse me of that, but I didn't feel comfortable myself making a raise, being above, just because our people would. And some of that, some of that is on me for this year, but now, as far, I think it was said it came out unanimous for the budget. Now, when I voted for the budget to be presented, I thought that included all the fee office holders' salaries in that as well. I was, I was under the impression that was included in that.
But I didn't know that they think that was the budget, and so I thought it was all on, you know, no one got one till...
Mr. Chairman, did you...
Yes.
I voted against it the first, but I can see where the sheriff is coming across. I would put in the form of a motion to be voted upon by the commission that we do increase those three salaries to be straight across the board for the remainder of this year.
What, what, be specific.
The sheriff, mayor...
And the highway department.
And the highway department.
To be what? To be how much?
Instead of a lim, or what, they were paid last year, what would that amount be?
They were at $93,702.
Whatever you pay the sheriff, but he has to make 5% more by law. Eddie's not even included in this, he just kind of got thrown into the mix years ago, but he's, he's not required to meet anything with the sheriff and mayor. But if sheriff's, if sheriff's 5%, then the mayor has to be 5% higher.
But don't we pay the road superintendent a little bit more because they do all their own engineering?
No.
And let me correct that too. County road law says that I meet with the sheriff's salary.
It's the same in the minimums, it's the same in the minimums, it sure is.
And it was got, it was given, from what I'm told, I came up after the fact, because of the engineering that we do, we don't hire outside engineers, we do our own engineering, and that's why we were supplemented through Don Palmer's administration back years ago. And I don't know exactly, I'll have to try to find a resolution if that helps. I'm not concerned about the money. What I'm mostly aggravated, I guess, as commission about, is that we never were told that this was happening. State law says that we get a raise one year previous to our budget. So, this year, we should get a 3.46% rate.
If you're, if you're at the minimum, you're already way above the minimum.
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and you're gonna be way wrong if you say that again, you're wrong.
I say you're wrong.
Okay, well...
Yeah, you can, you can reduce my pay while I'm over the minimum.
We didn't reduce any of your pay. You haven't been reduced, Eddie.
It's being, it's being equalized though to a point, and we're done without the 3.46 increase. And don't tell me we're not doing that.
That's correct, because you're already 4% or 5% higher than 3.4% increase.
Then you're talking out both sides of your mouth, because you're saying there, it's not, you know, it doesn't matter. But it does matter, it's money out of, out of my pocket, his pocket, and his pocket. It's money out of our pockets.
It's money you didn't have. You didn't get a raise, you didn't get a raise on the, what, what are y'all at now? 89, what'd you say, Kelly?
But the 3.46%.
You aren't entitled to 3.46%. I'm sorry.
It's freeze at $93,722.
So, you're $93,000, what's the minimum for that job right now?
It's $91,901.
$91,901.
So, you're still 2,000 above the minimum.
Okay, but state law, last year, passed for...
Not for you, it didn't.
Yes, sir.
No, it did not.
All right, go ahead, I don't want to argue about it, especially in a public meeting, but I'll bring you the documentation.
Bring out your documentation.
And I'll, I'll bring you the control.
Sure, sure, bring it in.
We'll find that, because that's the only way, you need to let the county attorney dig into it, because you're not an attorney.
I stayed in Holiday Inn last night.
I know you did.
Yeah.
I know you did.
Mr. Chairman, I would put it in the form of a motion, we...
We've got a motion here, go ahead, Commissioner Mears.
We increase their pay to make everything equitable for this year.
But you gotta tell, you gotta put a number on that, David.
What would the number be currently, Tracy?
The minimum, as it was stated, for the sheriff and the highway department superintendent for the current year is $91,901. What has been done is that $4,915 added to the minimum.
And that was for what?
The $4,915.
The reason for that pay?
For what I understand, it was for workhouse superintendent, for the sheriff, and for engineering, for the highway department superintendent. So, if that's added, which that's what had been done, the total for the highway department superintendent and the sheriff would be $96,816 compared to the $93,742 that they received in 19, and that the budget was adopted at.
Takes the mayor to what?
Takes the mayor to 101.5, I'm sorry, 101.65.
Can I ask a question along those lines? What is the difference in what you just got through saying and what we passed in the budget?
The difference between...
I mean, I know it's a stupid question, but...
We gotta know what the total dollars is for David's motion.
96,816 and 93.
So, the difference in pay is the amount that the sheriff receives for operating that workhouse. And when he gets more money for operating the workhouse, automatically, the mayor and Eddie get more money.
Is Eddie required to get more money for workhouse? He is not.
What, what I'm understanding of the budget was that we were not going to pay the workhouse.
So, it wasn't, we didn't do that.
That was our...
See, that's what, that's what the confusion with me is all about.
And that was my understanding, that we weren't going to include the workhouse fee, and then as soon as they're not doing that, it got the sheriff, and got Eddie, and got the mayor's.
But we didn't cut anybody's pay. We didn't cut it, we just froze it.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody lost it.
What they recommended in the Budget Committee was to freeze the mayor, sheriff. It was to freeze them.
Well, I'm trying to find out for his motion, what the total was.
I'll give his, his motion a second.
Yes.
We need to know a number, what number we're talking about.
With the workhouses, yes.
That's where we're at now.
They're right here. This is what they were making from last year, yeah.
So, Tracy, how much more does this cost us this year?
That's what I'm gonna ask.
About $3,000, well, hang on, you mean total? So, I gotta, hang on a second, because I got this total.
The state don't say we have to do this, they led you into this, and the state don't tell us we have to do this. This is your voluntary.
Would you explain what the state says about this, Mayor? Please.
Do you want to pay raise, Mayor?
I don't think that that's up to him to answer, he's getting one regardless, because that's what it says in the state law, that state mandate, so how do you make...
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Well, what are we arguing about then?
I don't know.
We're not arguing. What we have is a motion and a second on the floor to adjust the salaries of the highway foreman, the sheriff, and the mayor, and Tracy's gonna give us a total, what that means.
You want me to answer Commissioner Duss's question?
Go ahead.
The, the way it is set up now, with our minimum salaries plus the 5% that comes with the workhouse, stopping with the sheriff's budget, with the sheriff's salary...
I don't know what you're looking for, I'm sorry.
Technically, it should be at 96,816. That is the sheriff along with the highway superintendent.
Yes.
And by statute, I have to make 5% more than that.
So, that's an increase over where we are now by how much, people? Tracy's working on the calculator.
In wages alone, it's $93.76.
$93.13.
In wages, it's $93.76, but if I, I need to add Social Security, retirement, and Medicare toward it, that's an additional 14.36%.
Y'all three are part of TCRS, aren't you?
Yes, yes. So, that's, that's what really affected the sheriff, it's last year.
Did you remember while you're doing all this, you've talked about county will get a $500 bonus, that does not affect their retirement whatsoever too, and we don't even have a retirement in place for them. So, remember that, as we're all doing this too, that we didn't give anything to county employees, nothing.
I think, again, it's strictly up to commission, I think we have to warrant a conversation as far as looking at our employees.
Yes, we do.
Because, you know, even the month of July alone, we cleared, we beat last July by $100,000, just in July, 47%.
Yes, our revenue numbers came in.
And our revenues have not fallen, they've actually went up.
They've gone up. And I think we had our magic cake all back during budget.
And that's exactly right, hindsight.
Yeah, we don't have a magic, that's true.
If I'd have said, I tell you what, if back in March, if I'd have said, who would've took a bet, if I said, "I bet you $100, we'd do $100,000 more in July than we did last year," everybody in the budget would've bet.
Why don't we discuss this at the workshop?
It's $10,723, that's wages plus Social Security, retirement, and Medicare, that's because, you know, fixed charges on the county side.
That would be the form of my motion to have that amended.
Okay, and we got a second from Commissioner Tinker.
I do have a question. Tracy, are you doing that off of the freeze? Because you did it off the freeze, which was $93,742?
I did it off the freeze.
Okay, so did you add back in the workhouse, which was 4,915, to the $93,000 or not?
The freeze...
You took the freeze...
It included that.
You did the freeze and then did the 3.4?
So, it should be the 91 minimum plus the workhouse.
So, the total for, for the sheriff and the highway department superintendent would be the 91 minimum plus the workhouse. That gets them to 96,816.
Okay.
The difference between 96,816 and the 93,747, where they already are, that's what the budget is. I gave you the increase in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that's what you wanted, but, okay.
So, basically, it comes back to 10.7 for the total budget increase if we were to go with Commissioner Mears's motion.
Yes.
Can you repeat the motion, so I have it right?
What's that?
Will you repeat the motion exactly, so I have it right?
I would put forth a motion that we increase those three individuals by a increase in their salary of $10,700 for this year.
Can I ask one more question, just for my clarification? We got a motion and a second, so we still have discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner. With Phil. Tracy, did, when we were working on this in the budget, and we decided that we, we took action only on the workhouse amount of money, now, do these three officials, they get a mandatory raise from the state each year like the other elected officials?
They do.
And we didn't touch that. They, they got that raise, did they not?
Well, the motion, and I don't have my notes on this part of it, but it was my understanding...
Did we not?
It was my understanding that the Budget Committee's motion, the Budget Committee's recommendation was to keep their wages at what they were.
That's what they were.
At what they were.
But it's still above the state minimum.
It's still above the state minimum, but where these three officials were in 1920 included the supplement.
Well, like I said, we've had several sleeps, and I thought we were dealing only with the workhouse amount that we didn't touch in the budget.
That was what was.
And again, when we were doing the budget back in May and part of June, we were...
And again, when we were doing the budget back in May and part of June, we were in financial stress.
We're still on financial...
I know, I understand.
But we hear two, two people talking here.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
One of them says one thing and the other says the other. So what are we supposed to do? I'm just confused.
We all are.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Will you read it? Tammy?
To increase the three individuals, the sheriff, highway superintendent, and the mayor, an increase of ten thousand, seven hundred for this year.
And we have a second from Commissioner Tinker.
I have one more question. Tracy, on your TCA code, when you asked C-TAS, what did they say? Did you ask them a question about the mayor, the sheriff, and the highway department? If that falls under TCA code?
They are act, those officials are actually listed in the code. Let me see. Establishes minimum compensation for, I'll, I'll read the list, assessors of property, county clerks, clerks of court, trustees, registers of deeds, county mayors, sheriffs, and highway officials. Those three officials are actually listed as part of the TCA that governs the minimum salaries for officials each year.
No, they all making over their minimums. Currents three.
Only the three.
Those three are making over their minimums.
And those three are making over the minimum.
Under the current adopted budget.
Well, why do we have, why do we have this thing in our, our mind about the minimum? Some people pays minimum rate, but these are very poor counties over across this state. But why do we have to pay a minimum? The state's minimum.
We're paying above the minimum.
Most people pay a whole lot more than the state minimum.
I think we're above the minimum.
We are.
Any further discussion? Tammy, call the roll. Read the motion and then call the roll.
To increase the three individuals, the sheriff, the highway superintendent, and the mayor by ten thousand, seven hundred for this year. Made by Mayor, second by Tinker.
Okay, Mears?
Before I make a vote, I want, Eddie, you made a, we were under dire straits when we were looking at the budget. I will belly up, we let this slip through the cracks. I want to be fair, but we're also trying to be fair with our employees as well. And that's important. I will support it, but, you know, no one controls me, you understand that, please.
Okay.
What's your, what's your vote?
I vote aye.
Vote aye.
Aye. Tinker?
Aye.
Sutterfield? Whitfield?
Aye.
Cullen?
I'll go aye.
Doug?
Now, this is to, let it stand.
This is to restore everything.
To restore it.
Restore it. Throw it to the wind.
I'll vote for that.
Shane?
No.
Waller?
No.
Rooster?
I'm having a tough time with this and...
Me too.
The only reason I'm having a tough time with it is we backed up and we didn't give county employees a raise, we didn't give teachers a raise. And I understand, I understand about TCA code and I understand those officials that fall under TCA code and I understand that the sheriff and Eddie and the mayor fall under there too. These people such as the other elected officials, I think they are set at the minimum. And I can understand, TCA code says we have to pay above the minimum. But I do have a tough time with this because the mayor and the sheriff and the highway department, Mr. Simpson, are above the minimum. And it's just, it, it makes it for a difficult situation here. Because I really feel like our county employees don't deserve a bonus. They deserve a raise. And so I am going to ask that the budget committee take another look at this and get off this bonus. A bonus is not going to help them in long term for retirement. Retirement is what we all work for and a bonus is not going to give them anything towards their retirement. And we are seeing our revenues are in higher. I'll vote yes with restrictions on that, I just, I'm not very happy about it.
Eight to two, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to dovetail on this one. I'm going to go around, this is embarrassing, I'm going to be honest, this is extremely embarrassing, that we would do this for the highest paid officials in this county, when we didn't have to. We didn't have to do the fee office holders. I'm going to put a motion on the floor right now.
You did have to.
I'm going to put a motion on the floor right now, looking square at Kelly Brewster and say, I want to go ahead and give our employees retro actively to July first, a two and a half percent raise.
And I will second that motion. Please.
How much is that going to cost?
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If we got it to throw away here, we got to throw away everywhere.
Everywhere.
You're on your own down there. You're on your own down there.
Except the schools.
I figured Dick was left out again.
Ten point five books, now we got, we're doing the books.
Two point five.
Is that retroactive to July first?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're going to go back, Mr. Shane?
Absolutely. Absolutely. If we're going, if we're going to go back and give all these people money, how, that was our argument in the budget committee, how do we give these people three and a half percent when we can't give our rank and file employees anything? That was the hang up the whole time.
That was my argument.
You won't give it.
Well, responsibly, two million dollars in the hole for a budget is not a bright thing to do, but if we can do it for this bunch, we'll do it for the others and hang with it. If the taxpayers have to eat it next year, they'll have to eat it. This, this is the most absurd thing I've ever heard. Most of the seconds on the floor, Ms. Brewster.
Can you discuss?
Ms. Blair, how much is this?
Give it all county employees a two and a half percent raise.
Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Who's second? Brewster?
It's only a hundred thousand.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
I will ask one question.
Amendment, amendment?
Two hundred.
We need to add the teachers to that. We need at least one or one and a half percent raise for the teachers if we're going to give out the raise.
Handle that, Tracy.
So we're going to redo the entire, we'll have to redo the entire structure for the penny distribution.
We can't do the teachers.
Well, like I said, I'm not bad. If we're going to help the highest paid employees, I, I've thought about that since we've done all this, about the, the office holders and their status, you know? The office holders, they get a raise, but the people working for them don't get one.
Well, here's, here's my thought on it. Here's my thought on it. I don't disagree that the employees need the raise, end of story. However, however, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, hang on.
Hold on.
I am hearing a lot of, let's blame the highest officials in the room for wanting a raise. Unfortunately, I think what happened is somebody on the county commission, the budget committee, somebody overlooked that this snuck through and on budget night, we all voted for it. Now we're having to fix what we voted for and that's the end of the story. We should take responsibility for what just happened. We shouldn't be upset that they're sitting here saying, we get our state funded raise. We missed it.
No, we didn't.
We missed it.
They're not entitled to a state funded raise.
We missed it. So we've made the vote, they get their raises, we make a better opportunity next year to relook through the budget with more of a fine tooth comb and stop missing opportunities to save money.
We didn't miss anything.
One thing too, yes, I will accept part of the blame on, and I'm going to belly up to the bar, but let me make a statement. The budget committee, I've been on twelve budget committees, I've never seen a budget committee this year under such stress as they were.
Absolutely.
And yes, we did make a mistake, but I didn't see any commissioners coming down, being critical. All you do is come down and sit down and, and look at what we're dealing with instead of critiquing it.
Right, but I'm also not sitting there blaming these people for it.
We made the mistake. I, I, I take this responsibility, yes.
Thank you.
What was your mistake? Is it keeping it all a secret?
No.
No, we didn't keep it a secret.
We did not make provisions to take care of this on the night of the budget approval.
Let me clarify something. There was no mistake made. When we were doing the budget, we were under extreme financial constraints. The country was shut down for two months, the revenue stream dropped. We had to make some decisions in order to get a budget done by June thirtieth. We made the decision. Thank God the budget revenue is coming back.
Thank you.
But here's the issue. If you're going to correct it, understand it comes with a price tag.
A hefty price tag.
And I think if this commission, if we pass this and I, you know, we do it, if it includes possibly a tax increase now or in the future, I think we must accept the responsibility as being commissioner.
I agree.
Can I ask a question? Does the local elected officials, where are they in all of this?
They all got a raise.
What?
They all got a raise, they just got it.
Because they were making the state minimum.
From us.
They were supposed to get a raise.
Three point four percent.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I got the, I got the...
I will have to say that during the budget process, like I said, at no time did we intentionally try to use subterfuge or anything like that. We did what we thought was the best thing, not knowing what all the TCA laws were, were about, but again, the circumstances was hoping that we would have some money when we were making cuts, anywhere that we could make a cut so that our county didn't go bankrupt. And I said, we looked at all the revenues now, I said, what we picked out, of course, come to find out, TCA, state law has trumped our, our actions. Like I said, we didn't have an attorney sitting with us when we were doing this, so we did what we thought was best. Now we're trying to make sure that we come back and take care, amend those things and do what state law says to do. State law says that they, if they've got to make X amount of dollars and that's what we're going to do, we're going to restore that.
I agree.
But at the same time, I, you know, morally, I have a problem with, if we're going to do that, then we, like Kelly, we need to look at all these other folks that, that didn't get a raise and so...
Motion's on the floor.
But, but I, I think we're getting a little excited here. We're about to give Ms. Blair a stroke.
Yeah.
Because she's getting ready to have to try to sit over there and refigure the penny distribution, everything.
There's no penny distribution for county... Not for our county side, there's not.
Just for the school side.
Right, for the school.
We've got to send Lenore City money if we give out these tranches.
So I, I just hate to put her in that situation.
Well, as far as the penny distribution and all that's concerned, it really gets up, up above me. We probably need a trustee here. Taxes, tax notices have been mailed.
It's already set.
And so we may be past the point of being able to do anything about that. I would have to do some checking on that. But we may be past the point of doing anything about the penny distribution. That would come into play in a discussion about the Board of Ed for sure.
But even if we just discuss county employees at this point, what does that do to your bottom line versus our current revenue that we have now? I know Van mentioned we were at a two million dollar shortfall, but with our current revenue...
Five seven, adopted budget, one point five seven in the hole. The two and a half will add about two twenty?
Yes, the, the, to the expense budget.
To the, no, get schools, just to the county employees.
Just county employees.
That would add about another two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so that takes us up to about a million and three quarter in the hole.
And the budget is adopted that way. Current adopted budget is the expenses are one and a half million dollars more than the revenues. That's the way the current budget is adopted. People are making reference to the revenues and that's something that we need to keep in mind. The revenues came in good compared to the budget in fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Are you counting, are you counting the state grant money that we got?
I was actually talking about local revenues, sales tax, hall income tax, business tax.
But that's sitting there right now, we've not, even though the state took the strings off of that, that grant, the counties can spend it any way they want to, one point three million.
Yes, but I wasn't even talking about that million dollars, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not, that that's not...
It's in capital.
Since we've stepped in it two, three times, I want to make sure.
Right.
She wasn't counting on that.
Tracy, can we take this, instead of trying to redistribute the pennies, can we take this simply out of fund balance?
The, the two and a half percent increase for county employees?
Yes.
Uh, yes, the answer to that's yes.
We don't need to vote pennies for the county. We don't, that don't affect county general.
It's only a two hundred thousand dollar?
Yes, about, I think it'll be about two fifty, but yes, that's, that's the county side of the budget. It requires no distribution, uh, property tax pennies.
We cannot leave the teacher, we can't get, you know, our basis on all this, no raises, was no raises for everybody. And now we, you know, we've restored some and now we're wanting to give the county employees a raise, you know, I...
Commissioner Tinker, what is...
I don't think you can leave the teachers out.
Commissioner Tinker, what is a starting employee teacher make?
With the BS, it's probably in the upper twenties, maybe thirty something thousand.
Woo, poverty. In the thirties?
In the thirties.
In the thirties. A county employee starts at like twenty-four.
But they've also, at least, all, all gone to school too. I'm not saying anything about county employees not going to school, I'm just saying, I know all the teachers have a, have a four-year degree.
And I know that teachers get insurance paid for single family, the school, except that, yeah.
When the amendment comes around, you don't support it, don't vote for it.
That teachers get that kicked up too, is insurance for single.
And single unforgiveness.
Yes, but the county employees do not.
Are we better off taking this to the budget committee on the twenty-first and then putting it to a vote?
You got a motion, second on the floor.
And an amendment.
Okay.
Second.
We can't address the amendment because we can't address pennies right now.
Well, the, the amendment regarding the schools, I was about to suggest that, as far as the schools are concerned, I, I think that, Commissioner Tinker, you can help me out on this, that it would require additional revenue from the county, is that correct, for the teachers to receive an increase?
That's correct.
Question, yes. So, and of course, that's not action that commission can take tonight related to the property tax distribution, because we need to do some homework on that and I need to contact some other elected officials and probably some people at the state to even see if that can be done. But we can't amend the Board of Education budget tonight either, because that has to go through the Board of Education. So Commissioner Cullen, I think you suggested about going to the budget committee workshop, at least that portion of what has been discussed this evening needs some further discussion.
It would also have effect on the MOE Youth Board, the Board of Education, correct?
Absolutely.
Well, did we just, did we give teachers anything last year and didn't give them anything this year?
No.
And if we use any part, if we use, say, the state grant money, do we still have to share that with Lenore City if we use it to give...
Yes, I would say so.
One third.
If you give teachers a bonus? If you give teachers a bonus?
Two thirds, one third.
If you give teachers a bonus, do you have to?
If you give teachers a, well, it's not, it's not how the Board of Ed appropriates the money. It's the local revenues that the county forwards to the Board of Ed that has to be, that's the basis of sharing.
Is sales tax for the school getting the revenue?
So county commission can't, or where it's spent, wouldn't give it to the.
Their sales.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at how much above it is, but yes.
So they can get raised out of that.
Suggestion.
Okay. All right, let's get back to the business at hand.
Let's stay, let's stay with the county general fund right now. That's all we can deal with.
It's time to vote.
I'm ready.
We have a motion to include the teachers. Are you going to hold that motion? Are you going to withdraw it, Coach?
Well.
Tracy said we can entertain that amendment tonight.
Well, I understand, but it's on the floor.
It's, um, here's my personal, I'm still think the teachers deserve something. If we're going to do something, I think they deserve something. And at the same time, I'm also hesitant about voting for anything tonight before going to a budget meeting.
That's what I'm.
And getting everything lined out with Tracy is exactly what it means for the county financially. I'm for it. I'm for giving the county employees a raise, for helping the teachers out, but I'd like to sit down with Tracy and find out exactly what the, I don't want to write a check that I can't cash.
Well, we already, we passed that by a million and a half dollars.
Well, we borrow some from Andy. He said.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second.
Well, make sure everybody's clear. This is county employees only. Retroactive 2% raise back to July 1st.
2.5%.
Did you withdraw your?
2.5%.
That's what you said.
2.5%. Same as the.
We got an amendment.
Let's vote on the amendment first.
Well, I don't know, do you?
You didn't get a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let's vote on it.
Well, what's the amendment?
To give the county, to give our county teachers 1.5?
Well, legally, that we're back to the state thing, we can't do that.
Can't do it.
Tracy said we can't do it.
We can't amend the Board of Ed budget. That has to come to the county from the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
Tracy, can we have a call meeting for the Budget Committee ASAP? Put everything together, dollar figures and everything, and then have a call meeting to pass this proposal?
We're all here right now, David. The Budget Committee, everybody's here. We know the details. It's 220,000 more dollars out of a 1.5 million dollar budget.
But I'm referring to the board.
The school board, we can have all meetings you want. All we can do to them is, they've got, they've got to have the revenues. We can't give them a raise. We don't have the authority over the Board of Education.
But if we sit down with them and tell them what we're wanting to do?
If you were to give the Board of Ed that amount of money, I'm sure they would pass it long as for a raise. But I'm not, I'm, I'm, I can't say that because I'm not to that ten-member body, but I, I know that they were very interested in, in being able to give a raise. I can say that, and I would find it hard to believe they, they would pass that long ago.
I'll tell you what, for the sake of, I will withdraw my amendment for the time being, but like I said, we're still going, you know, we're going to go to the, we'll have a budget workshop, and in the workshop itself, I said, I want to hear from Tracy if there's any way that we can do it and not sink her ship with it.
Okay, and that'll be on the 21st of September.
I couldn't even look at giving them a bonus without having to redistribute.
You can't give a bonus out of.
I'll sit right here and say it.
General fund.
We can give straight cash.
Can you give a bonus to teachers?
I thought she said earlier she couldn't do that.
We can.
We can.
We can't do anything for teachers.
The school board will.
The school board has to.
Yeah, they can.
But we can't tell them what to do with money we give them.
Yeah.
That's true.
Whatever, whatever that comes to. Okay, the motion has been withdrawn by Commissioner Satterfield, so the original motion's on the floor for 2.5% raise for the county people, retro back to July 1st.
I agree.
We beat it to death, call the roll.
Hurley?
Yes.
Tinker?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
No, go back to the Budget Committee with it.
Duff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
I'm going to say yes, but it hurts.
Brewster?
Why, yes!
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Open it up.
Okay.
Mr. Cullen, do you mind if I review just a little bit? I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that I, everybody that, yeah. Find my notes.
Tracy, you're going to have a vacation.
No kidding. The first item under my name was about the, ceasing the raises of the elected officials.
2%.
The 2021 budget included those minimum amounts?
Say that again, because we can't hear you.
Okay. The first item under my name was about the recommendation to cease the raises of the elected officials.
Yes.
Elected officials excluding Sheriff, Mayor, and Highway Department Superintendent. The current year budget, 2021 budget, included those minimum amounts. There was no action on that item. So those officials will continue to receive their raises. Everybody good with that?
Correct.
That's it.
Okay. Oh, we didn't go.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Chairman?
What?
The, so, the school board has a meeting Thursday night. Would you like any information to be able to discuss, add to the workshop about particulars or?
Verify.
What would you need?
Verify the dollar amount for one thing.
Of one, of one and a half percent raise?
Um, one.
Yes.
I didn't hear a percentage here, but.
He said one and a half.
Okay.
One and a half.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can give a few different, I can do, I'll do one, one and a half too.
Okay.
Is a raise, now, let me just clarify just so that I'm clear, if it were a bonus, is that different? How is that, how would that be calculated differently?
Well, it's just that, you know, annual wages each year adds to that total that is forwarded to TCRS at retirement. Bonuses are, you know, it doesn't.
So we'll just look at that maybe as if that's the last.
Okay.
But what would you, I still don't understand what you would need from the board.
No, that's not a given yet.
Can we, can we cover that?
You said the board would have to request, you just need the number, I can do that in the morning, but.
Well, the discussion.
Would you need them to say if, if the county commission gave them a one or a one and a half percent amount of money, that they would vote to do that for, that they would give that to them in the form of a raise?
That would be acceptable. The discussion here this evening was about a percentage increase in wages for teachers. So of course, the county needs an amount. If the county is going to look at some method to provide revenue for that purpose, the county needs an amount. And once that's done, I'm thinking that at some point in time, the board will amend the budget to include those raises in those wage lines in your budget, and then that would flow to Commission as an amendment to the appropriations to approve those wage increases. Because I understand the intent. I understand the reason that the county would, you know, would do this. But the fact is, if it's, I don't know, $400,000, and the county comes up with the way to give the Board of Education $400,000, the county can't tell them how to appropriate it. The Board of Education has to do that. So it will come back to the county in the form of a budget amendment after the board approved the budget amendment.
My question is, would you be able to vote on it here at, in the October meeting, if the board hasn't voted for, if you're just giving a number, could you vote on it in an October meeting after Budget Committee and workshop?
Vote on.
That meeting would be October 5th.
Right.
What the county would be able to vote on would be an amount and a method to give the board that revenue.
The method's the trick.
The method will be the trick.
During the budget process, if the 1.5% y'all asked for was going to call, would require $320,000 to do a 1.5% raise, to make it the total 320, it has to be a half million because Lenore City is 35%. So a 1.5% raise will require a half million dollars.
No, the 320 included Lenore City's. The raise was two.
No, it did not.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't.
320 was just the 1.5 for county, or county teacher, county education.
Raise that we talked about was two something, but was going to be three something.
Yeah, if you do two and one, that's what it was.
It takes a half million to do 1.5.
I'll give you, then a couple of affirmative numbers. Okay, one, one and a half, and two. And I'll do, and I'll do five. One, one and a half, two, and five, just, just.
5%.
Yeah, just look at it.
Shoot the moon, man.
Okay.
We're in a festive mood here tonight.
Tracy, I'll get that to you first thing in the morning.
That'll be fine.
If you want to send that out to Budget Committee or Commission, however you want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy?
Also, considered this evening was, I don't remember how the motion was stated, but it was to increase the wages of the Sheriff, Highway Department Superintendent and the Mayor, basically to the amount that it would have been if their wages had not been frozen. It's about $10,700. That includes wages and, and fixed charges.
And that passed.
That passed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I got to come back to that one. The other thing that passed this evening is a 2.5% wage increase for our other county employees, and that is retroactive to July 1st, and that passed.
That has not passed.
Yes, that passed. Nine to one.
That passed.
Nine to one.
I'm sorry.
A guy listening favorite, taking a fact to the Budget Committee, so we find out if we're going broke, but if.
No, we're going broke.
So Commissioner Cullen, I do have one question for clarification, and it is related to the Sheriff, Highway, and Mayor effective date.
July 1.
I wanted to be sure it wasn't included in the motion.
Goes back to the beginning.
Okay.
They got to have it. They can't get mileage out of it.
All right. Okay. Well, one thing we've learned, Tracy, is to ask more questions.
I will bore you with questions.
Hey, we'll hit the same thing again next year, I promise you.
It'll piggyback shit too.
It'll be worse.
Okay.
Are we ready?
All right. We're ready to move on.
Item number two.
I have one quick question right here in the middle of this. Have we gotten our 1.2 million from the state yet?
Oh, we have.
We received the check.
We have.
We have it in our hands.
We do.
We got it locked down here at Foothills.
Yeah.
It is in general capital projects.
Is it 1.2 or 1.3?
Uh, I think two. I think it's 1.2.
It started out 911, and then they upped it a little, took the strings off of it. So we got capital projects covered. So if that's 300,000 capital projects that we kind of committed to, that leaves us about $900,000 to plug our $2 million budget shortfall.
So we are in the process of collecting the request as was presented to the county departments that will be forwarded to the, to the Capital Projects Committee to review, prioritize, and then send them to Budget. But the entire amount was received in general capital projects.
Did we send out a second letter asking department heads for their wish list?
Sent them an email.
Since, since we knew the strings were off of it?
Mm-hmm.
Why did we do that?
Uh, because the, the first time, they had to put it together.
Right.
That they were notified. They were to put it together according to what the state was requiring.
Right.
And each project had to be approved by resolution, by county commission, and.
Still has to go through capital projects.
It still has to go through capital projects, but it didn't have to go through all of that.
But I kind of.
They asked them to keep it within the parameters, try to keep it within the parameters.
Our last conversation in Budget Committee when this was discussed, was, we got the sheriff's, sheriff's police cars that we committed every year to on the two cents, that we took the two cents out, so that was 200 and something thousand.
Two rounds of that.
Two rounds of that, beginning and the end.
$300,000, whatever it was, we, we really firmly committed $300,000 of the, of the state grant. And I thought we were talking about taking the rest of it back to general fund to plug the hole in the budget.
That's what we were talking about.
That's, that's what we talked about in Budget Committee, because once, when the strings were on it, essentially, we were going to have to throw away half of it for stuff we didn't need, which made no sense whatsoever.
We were going to go ahead and do the request on the, that they had for capital projects.
Not once the strings came off.
Well, I thought we were going to leave it there. That way, we had an accurate count of when we did dip into it, what we were doing.
The Budget Committee was going to move the balance over into general fund to plug the hole in the budget was the intent. That's what we talked about in Budget Committee.
I thought we were going to leave it as it comes, though. I didn't think we were going to move on some.
We got a lot bigger hole tonight. Yeah.
Well, one thing about it being in the whole structure of the current year budget as related to that state's money, don't forget that county departments have all of the budgets for communication equipment, law enforcement equipment, office equipment, all of those budgets were zeroed out. And the majority of those budgets really weren't for a specific item somewhere, but the majority of it, you know, $2,000 in an office equipment budget, that's in case you're, that's in case your, somebody's workstation goes down. The county departmental budgets do not have those because they were zeroed out, and they were told to request that out of this, these funds as well. So some will probably be big-ticket items, but probably there will be some workstations and some printers and, you know, some scanners or things like that that are typically budgeted in their departmental budget, but they're not there right now. I've already had some issues as far as that's concerned.
And that's where we had to leave some of that in there because they had already made those requests.
And we do plan to leave some, but bulk of it's supposed to be going to fill the budget. Anyhow, we're not doing that tonight, so I'd say we can move on.
All right.
Okay, I think, item number two, I think I could go there, right?
Item number two.
Uh, consideration of recommendation to reduce the appropriation for the $2,500 contribution to Loudoun County Education Foundation for Run LocO. Loudoun County Education's Foundation's request was for assistance to fund this marathon event, and the purpose of it is to raise additional funds that are eventually contributed to education. Commission approved $2,500 in the 2021 budget, but the Budget Committee learned that Run LocO, which was originally scheduled for December of this year, has been canceled. So the Budget Committee's recommendation is to reduce the appropriation by the original, what was originally approved, the $2,500, and not send that amount to Run LocO.
Motion to reduce by 2,500 bucks.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Shaver, to reduce to $2,500. Any further discussion?
Mister gentleman, I had the opportunity of talking to some people and discussing with this. They received a rather large amount, and they're, they have individuals that are looking at it, they're blathering it, and they're going to be in pretty good shape, so I would concur with the motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Now, I have, I have some discussion on this. The, uh, the 2,500, but that was to go to the, the race.
The race. It's not happening anymore.
And it's not happening. So they hope they can have it next year. So is, why take the money away from them this year? Why, why take, just roll it over for next year? That's what they plan to take it. And I'd like to make some comments about what the Loudoun County Education Foundation does. Each of you got an email today, I think, I don't know whether you've had time to read it or not, but, uh, the Educational Foundation, uh, in 2012, got a, a trust for $700,000 plus. They still have 40, $400. They spent $70,000 a, a, a year out of this trust, and, uh, this, uh, they do the stuff within that budget, uh, they, uh, help education for the main part. They helped, uh, 100, they got 180,000, 100, 180 grants, uh, with benefits. They got $6,000, uh, went to students and the teachers, that's per year. They funded, uh, the teacher supplies out of, out of this. You've got this, I'm just reviewing it, I've got one more paragraph to go. The, uh, 209 students a year for, uh, 26 years through the Young Achievers, and funded a literacy program, 800 students for that literacy program. This is a few of the many things that they do with their money. And this, uh, Run LocO, uh, was what the 2,500 went to, which in effect, uh, that, this is what they use their money for. It, it's not just throwing it away, but this looks to me like, sitting there, looking, reading this this afternoon, after they had called me and explained it to me, in addition to that, uh, to the letters that each of us got, that we've, uh, tried to reduce EDA, that was not legal according to the state of the funds. We reduced the visitors bureau, uh, 20,000, uh, and in the past two years, we reduced the, uh, Little City Schools taxes, six cents, uh, thanks to my partner here. Attempted to take away, uh, the building tax money, and the Run LocO now is going. I was just wondering what are, I mean, if, if, if you take it away, would you, would you put in the motion that you would fund it next year? I mean, I can't understand why they take it out of their kitty, because they've got, thanks to that trust, that they've got, they've, they've got half of the money still, still working with it, doing these things that I just got through talking about, which, they do a great job. It's a good organization. Here we've, here we are grabbing their money. Excuse me, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we got a motion and a second. No further discussion, there's money involved. A yes vote removes the $2,500, and no vote keeps it in. Call the roll.
Teacher?
No.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Deff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Brewster?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Hurley?
No.
I wanna change my vote to a no.
Yeah, he...
You meant to say no.
He meant to say no.
Yeah, y'all got me confused from that other mess we ran through.
Van Tho.
I'm still confused from that.
My fault, my fault.
Seven to three, the motion passes, it gets removed. Tracy?
I'm removing myself, you'll have the little, the little one to bed.
What's that?
You're going with the little one to bed.
Okay.
I'm sneaking out, sorry.
Tell, just briefly, tell us about the new baby name, all his name, size.
April 25th, Amelia Catherine Waller, six pounds, 13 ounces.
What happened April 25th?
I'm sorry, August 25th.
April 25th.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Where's the cigar?
It became...
Where's the cigar?
Do I have to pour the cigars? Well, next time.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. Tracy Guama, number three.
Item number three is consideration of recommendation to appropriate year two of the Board of Education five-year capital plan, that is at $549,100, plus the unencumbered balance of fiscal year 1920 appropriation, which was $147,406, for a total of $696,506. This will be in Education Capital Projects Fund 177. The sub-fund is AFT. The Budget Committee recommends approval.
I'll second it.
We got a motion to approve and a second from Commissioner Brewster. How much is left in the AFT now?
Uh, with this appropriation, it'll be about 1.2 million.
1.2 will be left after this appropriation.
Yes.
And as they say when it's gone, it's gone. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And if I remember right, that went through the Budget Committee, didn't it?
It did, yes.
Okay.
Do you mean we have both with the Budget Committee?
I do not.
It's all right. It's gonna go the same way tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the roll, Tammy.
Satterfield?
I thought we voted no.
Just say yes.
The ATF.
Yes. AFT.
Sorry, I had a sidebar over here. What'd they say, ATF?
It was intentionally distracting you there, thanks for that.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Deff?
Yes.
Shaver?
I'm gonna make my announcement like Tinker does. I can no longer support any expenditure from the AFT because Mr. Tinker opposed adding $50,000 a year back to the AFT, I vote no.
Brewster?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Tinker?
Uh, because I'm employee of the Board of Ed, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, I declare that my argument, my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this party represents, yes. I wasn't opposed to $50,000 going in, I was opposed to where it was coming from.
You voted no.
Because of its origination.
You voted no.
Okay, that motion, call.
No's a no.
Okay, Tracy?
We are on to number four.
Number four.
I make a motion, we approve both of those together.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion to approve it, seconded by Kelly to vote them both together. Any further discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Deff?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Tinker?
Uh, because I'm an employee of the Board of Ed, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, declare that my argument, my vote answer only to my conscience, my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this party represents, aye.
I know what I'm voting on now.
There was one item added to the agenda.
Yes, there was.
Is consideration of a $3,500 increase in the GIS budget. Uh, this is to replace a longtime employee who is resigning, and the replacement will happen prior to that employee's last date of employment for training purposes. This did not go before the Budget Committee, so I don't have a recommendation for you.
Okay, we got a request.
I made a motion.
Second.
We got a motion from Kelly to approve it. We've got a second from...
Tinker.
Tinker. Mr. Tink, Commissioner Tinker. Any further discussion?
I do have a question to Mike, or Tracy, and R. Tracy, whichever. There was no money already within your budget to do this without spending new money on it?
This is the GIS budget. It's very, very limited on what we have in there. It's, it's fair to balance, there's no, there is no extra in there.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Cohen?
Yes.
Deff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Tinker?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
And finally, summary financial statements for the month of August were distributed prior to the meeting. You also received a copy of the letter from the comptroller's office that are required to distribute to you upon receipt. This letter acknowledges receipt as well as approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget. I would point out that at the bottom of the first page, under the section entitled Structurally Balanced Budget, uh, there's a caution that's given here for the county related to the County General Fund as well as general purpose school. They note that this is the second consecutive year that the budget has not been balanced, that dispersments exceed receipts in both of those funds. And so, there's encouragement here to adopt balanced budgets in the future.
Why, why they get a little bit of what we did tonight?
That's a little speed bump that, um, you know, we, we would like not to have.
We didn't, we didn't do.
But at any rate, you have a copy of it, and I request that the records reflect distribution. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Mears, take us through the bonds and notaries.
Needing a second, after the last name is read, Mr. Chairman, Burnett, Crane, DeMerton, Gammons, Inan, Howell, Hall, Langer, Almanez, Smith. Needing a second, Mr. Chairman.
I wasn't gonna give it to you, don't look at me. Weren't that brief?
Okay, all, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Just before we dismiss, now I will make sure that we're in our workshop meeting, in our budget workshop, that the two items we discussed tonight will be on there, the raise for the county employees, I know, but we, we need to discuss the cost and ramifications, and also the possibility of the teacher raise. That'll be on Tracy's agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
We've got the high sheriff sitting here, and I know you all have, and I have, we've all had questions. Tell us what's up and when we're gonna move into the jail, if you know.
Never.
January was the predicted date to open, COVID hit.
February, I think, but then it went to March, and then May, and all that. It, it's been told to me that a little bit of financing left, and that is with the computer IP people, programming through cameras and doors that were misprogrammed. Uh, the door, one of the doors, the biggest overhead door, and the storage needs tweaking, and shower and toilet personal are on order. Captain Keener thinks we can get in there within a couple of weeks.
That's good, but Captain Keener thought that a month ago.
Well...
Do we need, do we need to bring the construction people back? Do we need to bring our, our construction people and our engineers back and see what they're not doing?
From what I've gathered, I mean, that's, that's mental, very mental.
Can you put them in jail?
You've owned that door a long time.
Can you put them in jail?
You got plenty of room.
Costs us, it costs us money. That's time's money, right? Uh, but I, I talked, Chip here, and you know, the mayor and I talked about, for a long time, we, we wanted to have an open house for the jail and, and all the citizens come and, and view through the COVID and all the other things. We felt like, I thought maybe a virtual tour might, might work, and we could have that out there, people could watch it anytime. So, Chip has agreed to do that, and we wanna go ahead and get that done as soon as we can, and then that way we can go ahead and move in.
Big strike.
My question again to you is, do we need to ask them to come back to workshop?
When is the workshop? Do we?
20th.
I hope you think we're, we're ready to go before then.
We're down to curtain rods, surely.
But we were down to curtain rods when it was here a month ago.
It's a little longer.
Shower curtains, that was one of the big things, that was on the list then.
Had a wet weather spring and the...
Yeah, floor leaked, roof leaked, no, no pie holes in the door.
It did.
So, the answer is no. We don't need to...
I don't think so. I think, if we don't, let me say this, within the next week, if we're not like, right ready, and you wanna bring them in for the workshop, bring them in.
We'll have time to do that. Make a motion with your...
Uh, I have one thing real quick. Mr. Mayor, can you have Ms. Husky give us an update at the workshop on the courthouse? Um, we've had some questions, and I know that we've been in the drying stage, and I think we're close to the end.
About the money, yeah. I don't know how close we are to the end, I would assume we are, but it is...
Close to the end of the drying.
Yeah, sorry, get it all dried out.
It was almost like six months, I think.
I saw a picture on Facebook of a piece of the historic wood carved up in a private citizen's house. Anybody else see that?
No.
It's out there. Motion still standing.
We got a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This video presentation is made possible by Brewster Services Group.